I hereby call to order this meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors. I ask, I believe it's Ms. Binder to lead us in the invocation, please.
Please, Lord, pray for us. We have many challenging decisions ahead of us. Please give us the wisdom and the guidance to make the right decisions for our constituents and for King George County.
Amen.
Amen. I now ask Mr. Weekly to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I hereby recess this meeting to allow the King George County Service Authority Board of Directors to come to order. I hereby call the King George County Service Authority Board of Directors to order. Electronic participation is encouraged and pursuant to the governor's emergency orders, social distancing shall be maintained for all physically present. If you choose to be physically present, you will be screened by authorized staff for signs and symptoms of illness. Based on the results of that screening, certain physical attendees may be denied entry. The following members are physically present.
James Morris, physically present.
Alan Parker, physically present.
Kathy Binder, physically present.
Annie Cupka, physically present. The following members are participating through electronic and remote means pursuant to the rules previously adopted by this board and through the governor's budget.
Carrie Cleveland, remote, participating.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cleveland. I direct the clerk to include this statement and any statement of remotely participating board members to be memorialized in the minutes. All right, shall we carry on with the remainder of Board of Directors business, Mr. Weekly?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Sorry, make sure I have the right piece of paper. Very good then. Any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Public comment. Is anyone here in the audience for public comment to the Service Authority Board of Directors? Seeing none, Mr. Dines, do you have anyone online for the Service Authority Board of Directors? Thank you. I'll now close public comment. Moving on to reports of members of the board. Go ahead, Mr. Morris.
Nothing to report, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Parker.
No report, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Binder?
No report.
Thank you. Ms. Cleveland, do you have a report, ma'am?
No report.
Very good, and I have no report. We will move on to consent agenda. And before we have a motion, Mr. Weekly, I failed to communicate an email to you and to the clerk. I did address it with Mr. Cusenberry on the Board of Supervisor side of the House. With our motion for the consent agenda with regard to the warrants, we just need to make sure the name of the prior interim county administrator gets stricken from the warrant pages because they are dated today. Thank you. And then do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda with that change?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the corrections already mentioned.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Report from the county attorney, Mr. Britton, do you have any report for us, sir?
No, Madam Chair, no report, thank you.
Very good, and we will jump down to General Manager's report. Do you have anything for us, Mr. Weekly?
No report, Madam Chair.
Very good then. Members, please note information items are upcoming remaining budget work sessions, and we will now move on to convene the joint meeting with the King George County Board of Supervisors. I ask for a motion to enter into a joint meeting with the King George County Board of Supervisors.
Motion to enter a joint meeting with the King George County Board of Supervisors?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. I hereby call the Board of Supervisors back to order. I ask for a motion to enter into joint meeting with the King George County Service Authority Board of Directors.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are in joint meeting. Is there any public comment for the joint meeting of the King George County Service Authority Board of Directors and the King George County Board of Supervisors? Seeing none in the audience, Mr. Dines, do you have anyone online, sir? Very good. With regard to the agenda, Mr. Weekly and Mr. Cusenberry, I discussed with both of you prior, due to the county attorney not being physically present, we're going to go ahead and strike the closed session from the agenda. So can I get a motion just to confirm that?
I move to strike the closed session from the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Very good then.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Britton, go ahead.
I was just saying, thank you, apologies, we can have a next time.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. All right then, Service Authority Infrastructure Projects, Mr. Weekly.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of both boards for facilitating this meeting tonight. Chris, if you can, thank you. Maximize that, please. All right, the purpose of the meeting, and I won't go through every bullet point, but I did want to touch base, the purpose of the meeting, debt balance is always a concern of where we're at existing, obviously when we talk about projects, how would we fund those, and also in concern of our existing debt. So we'll cover existing debt, provide a list of projects and overview, which we cited two documents that the Service Authority Board of Directors approved a few years ago, the feasibility study, we looked at decommissioning projects. We've also referred back to a preliminary engineering report for a new Perkins plant, should that move forward. We needed that for a grant application, and we also used the document known as Utility Master Plan Phase One. So just a little background. We're going to talk about potential funding. Obviously, there's potential funding, but those funding sources are determined by the board. Next steps, again, a board decision, but I really wanted to allow time for board discussion of projects. So in speaking with Robinson Farmer Cox, also with our finance department, the comfort level was really citing debt as of 6/30/2020, but I did capture the scheduled principal and interest payment. So as of June 30 of 2020, we had a little over $24 million in principal. As you know, interest will vary based on the balance, but the interest at that time was about $6.3 million. The debt schedule is right below that for this current budget, so about $1.4 million will be applied, $773,000 to the principal and $713,000 to the interest. And that will be a regular occurring thing that I know I give the Board of Directors either during budget meeting or, you know, a regular meeting. I certainly can share that with the Board of Supervisors, at least on an annual basis, should the Board of Directors, because I think there's tie-in as we talk about projects and debt service. The existing debt, existing is operative word, is to be satisfied in year 2036 as it exists. I think the last year's 2035 or definitely 2036, you're looking at like a $16,000 payment. So somewhere between 2034 and 2036 as it exists current today. Some project list and overview. So I mentioned the feasibility study and the Utility Master Plan. I looked at wastewater pump station upgrades. We are currently doing those now. That was part of a consent order item with DEQ. We broke that down in three priorities. Priority one, we're currently doing, and we'll finish by mid-April of this year. It carries a five-year timeline. We did that strategically, also for fiscal, the affordability of that. That was about $1 million worth of upgrades, and we certainly didn't want to fund that all at once and trying to stretch out the funding of that through our operating funds, but that is her project list. Perkins Corner Wastewater Treatment Plant and Oakland Park Wastewater Treatment Plant. Certainly, I will spend a lot more time with Perkins because that has been cited as a potential decommission or a new facility. Oakland Park was only cited as a potential decommission, and both of those projects, if you were to decommission, that flow would look to go to Hopyard Farms. New solids handling facility, we only have one solids handling facility that processes the sludge, and that goes to the landfill like a lot of other jurisdictions. So four of our five sites, Daubronne being the only facility that has the processing capability, so four sites are pumping hall there. The feasibility study looked at, if you left Perkins and Oakland online, you would look at possibly adding another handling facility. We're just, we struggle a little bit at managing our solids is what I like to capture in that comment. And there are various water projects, some of which have just came on the horizon, whether it's a cooperative effort with Caroline County for future planning for decades to come. As the comp plan has indicated, you're projecting, I think, needing over 3,200 homes by the year 2030. I believe that's page 88 of your comp plan. So certainly, we've got a lot of work to do to make sure we can provide water service. So there are some water projects which could also look like interconnecting systems. So the wastewater pump stations, I won't spend a lot of time. That's scheduled to be completed by April 2025 per our five-year approved plan with DEQ. Again, the estimated cost, roughly $1 million. After this year, we have spent about $100,000 towards that $1 million, and then the draft budget right now, we have about $150,000 of priority two projects in FY22. So we're slowly picking, knocking that number down, but trying to handle those projects through the operating budget and no new debt service. Perkins Corner Wastewater Treatment Plant, again, this looks at either a new facility or decommissioning and rerouting flow to Hopyard. I will say the rerouting option, we do have the capacity if the board were to decide to reroute one or both plants, that being Perkins or Perkins in Oakland Park to Hopyard. There is existing capacity there, and that site is expandable. The existing wastewater treatment plant is .12 MGD, so 120,000 gallons per day. We are currently seeing an average daily flow of 70,000 gallons per day. Some of this may seem as reoccurring information. We had a look at this data when we were looking at some prior development along Route Three. So those numbers are still very accurate to this day. So regardless who comes to a planning commission meeting and applies for development, we would be looking at those volumes that that development would generate to see if we have existing capacity or would we have to pursue other options. But we're saying long-term, to serve any development, you know, a decision would have to be made, or we recommend a decision being made of rerouting flow or building a new wastewater facility. The treatment plant, and I welcome a tour, if any of you like to do that. I know Ms. Cupka and I are scheduled for later in March, but Perkins definitely is in dire need of either repair or replacement. I've got some numbers on that in a minute. So it's limited capacity overall. That's what I want to leave you with at its existence state. This is just some trends that was provided in the plant upgrade, the PER, if you were looking at a new facility, and it's trending at what type of development, whether if you were to develop at 50 units per year, that's the blue line, and the bottom, you're tracking along in years. So that can let you know how quickly you would reach capacity. That proposed plant was looking at, you know, a couple tiers. You could go, you know, 250,000, but it was recommended if you did a new treatment plant, your maximum flow design you could build per DEQ in the outfall allocation is .5 MGD, so that's 500,000 gallons per day. So the other lines just track different range of development, 100 units per year or 150. You can see how quickly or how slowly you would meet capacity. So the blue line's the most favorable line. The other two scenarios, you reach capacity, and that's it. After that, there is no other capacity. You would have to, again, look at either rerouting additional flow to Hopyard, an option that's not in here, and it hasn't been explored at this time. We have no numbers. As if 301 were to explode with development, should there be an option looking at Daubronne? Daubronne Wastewater Treatment Plant has a lot of capacity remaining, and I'm not sure how much development the Board of Supervisors is looking to for that area. So there could be an option that's not in tonight's presentation, but I just want to mention that as far as options, as I'm sure there will be more than just one discussion like we're having tonight. So those are the development scenarios for a new wastewater treatment plant. These are the options we looked at when we did the PER. You had to pick a couple designs to evaluate, and again, we could not apply for WQIF, that's grant money through DEQ, without that PER being completed. And we also needed to evaluate what's the type of treatment that we should put there that makes the most sense. So we looked at an SBR, which is a sequent batch reactor, Fairview Beach and Hopyard, similar design, so it made sense to kind of look that route. And membrane bioreactors is just another type of treatment. You can see a more costly treatment. So I highlighted what was, at that time, thought to be the recommendation. If a new plant was constructed, the highlighted represents a half million gallon per day and a cost range between just under $10 million to $14 million. And there's things such as contingency and engineering costs is built in there. So I know that's a wide range, but that was the information provided in that PER. So some additional cost considerations for Perkins. This was, again, in the feasibility study. The estimated operation and maintenance cost over 20 years is expected to be $3.8 million. So there would have to be some type of investment. I can tell you right now, we struggle with the disinfection portion of the plant. We use ultraviolet right now, and the system that's there is obsolete. So at some point, we would have to make a move regardless. We did upgrade a blower last year. We downgraded. We didn't pick the top line because the thought was, why invest a lot of money if you're going to build a new facility or reroute it? So we have spent some money, but there are other items that's needed in that facility, depending on the timeline of what the board decides the future of Perkins. The estimated cost to take Perkins offline and reroute to Hopyard is $3.6 million. And these numbers were from about two years ago. So those numbers, I'm sure, will fluctuate. As you know, construction costs are just, you know, they've increased. Next up is Oakland Park's Wastewater Treatment Plant. Again, the feasibility study just looked at decommissioning and rerouting flow. That site is very small. If you've ever been out to that site, it's literally a postage stamp. It's right in a cul-de-sac to get to it in Oakland Park. However, it's permitted for .14 MGD, so it's actually permitted about 20,000 gallons per day higher than Perkins, and it is in better shape. There was some TLC that was given about three years ago that really salvaged the plant, I would say, and gave it a little more life, you know, whether that's five years, somewhere between five to 10 years. If the permit is allowed to stick in place, we have higher nutrient limits, and certainly that favors well. If lower limits ever came about, we would have to analyze the decommission recommendation based on permitting. So flow-wise, you can see, we have more capacity to support some growth than industrial park. And I know when you look at business, you do look at that, but generally, traditionally, unless it's a manufacturing that's using the process and water, you're generally only talking about a couple employee bathrooms anyway. So it wouldn't be a lot of waste stream generation. So I just want to give you assurance that there is, assuming we can stay at existing permit limits, there is existing capacity there that could serve more growth. I don't see a lot of residential proposing. I track your primary settlement area, that's very defined. So really, any potential growth we're tracking would be the industrial park. The decommission and rerouting cost, excuse me, is roughly $4.9 million. Again, these estimates were, you know, at least two years to three years old. Hopyard Farms sewer upgrade. So there are things, so the two numbers of decommissioning Perkins and Oakland Park, that gets you to the intersection of Route Three and 301, excuse me, Route Three and Port Conway. There will be some upgrades. You have to look at the size of your force main, so you have to size your pipe for the amount of flow to expect. So, you know, depending on if you're sending two plants or one plant flow, I have seen some localities take advantage of, hey, we may do this later, so we put in two lines. There are fusion pipes, so you can come back later, and when you're ready to go to a larger force main, because you're digging a trench already, right? So it's just really the cost of pipe, some labor, but you let, let's say it takes a six and an eight-inch force main. A six-inch would accommodate one plant rerouting, and later on, you wanted to send both plants there, you could put the eight-inch in as well, and then you would just simply tie the other one in. But this is just focusing on diverting both treatment plants to there. It's about $2.9 million. You could require a new pump station, so there were some options in there, but all in at $2.9 million. New solids handling facility, not going to spend much more time other than mentioning that the estimated cost for that was around $2 million. Solids handling equipment varies, so that number could go up, could go down, but there is some technology that may decrease the footprint that's required. So naturally, when you're talking about footprint, size of building, concrete and all that, the larger you go, the more expensive. There is potential, if you cited one, it could go down. However, when I get to the end of my list, I didn't really put that on there if you were asking me for a recommendation tonight, because unless there was a determination, if Perkins and Oakland were being decommissioned, then I would say, then you're only treating waste from three plants, and that's a little more manageable of taking that solids down to Daubronne to be processed. So this was left in the feasibility study, if you left, if all plants were online, even if you're doing upgrades. So just want to make mention of that. And the location that they mentioned was Hopyard. You'll have to think about that because, you know, how you store that, or if it's just going to dumpster, it'd be less odorous. If you have a compost building, anytime you go to move a front-end loader or something in there to move the solids around to load, it will bring an odor. There's just no way to escape that. So, but there is some odor control that you can do regardless. We don't have a lot of issue at Daubronne now, and that's density there. So some water projects, I mentioned some of these. The big, it's the big project, but it's unknown because we're not there yet. So both boards, I believe, were giving presentation from Caroline County. That joint permit application was filed. I appreciate the letter of support. So we do not know what cost would be associated yet. So I will speak about the knowns or what was listed in the other report. Interconnecting water systems was something that seemed to make sense. Those systems would interconnect between Hopyard, Oakland Park, and Courthouse. So Courthouse can be a little confusing. On the wastewater side, all the wastewater handled in the Courthouse region is referred to as Perkins because it goes to that sewer plant. The water side, it's known and permitted as the Courthouse system. So, but connecting those systems, it would provide some redundancy. It also would get you to one combined permit, and it may give you some flexibility within groundwater withdrawal limit. So if you have some reserves or more reserves in your Courthouse system, but you have less reserves in Hopyard or vice versa, there could be some advantages by taking advantage of that extra value and not push up against any DEQ permits on groundwater withdrawal. So if you look to do that at the time of decommissioning, if you were running sewer pipes and running the water, it was estimated at $4.5 million. Their estimated cost, which is not up there, was basically double if you did it at a later time. At the bottom of the list, and this is one at some point, I'd like to bring, you know, to the Board of Directors, and obviously, beyond that, you know, procedural, I look to the Board of Directors or mad at the Board of Supervisors if they're looking to approve a water meter project. I've spoken a little bit with Davenport about a potential way to fund the AMI water meter project. Initially, we looked at line of credit, but some of these projects, it's still, it's $2 million, don't get me wrong, but some of these projects such as meter replacements now, you can look at funding that through operating as well. It'd be looked at more of like a lease or a payment, an annual payment, but you would handle that through your operating budget and do that instead of turning that into long-term debt. The reason why I would like to look at that, and I didn't put together slides for you tonight, but for one, if you have an older meter asset that's not registering, our register for revenue is our water meters. If they are not reading accurately, and I know it sounds like a water meter, it won't add up to a lot, there's a big difference between a residential meter, which is lost revenue, and commercial. The larger-sized meter, the inaccuracies, the amount of revenue loss really grows. So you would see some revenue increase. I don't subscribe to the bottom dollar that generally, we're just going to say meter company X, I'm going to pick on all of them. I don't subscribe to 100% realization of the number they'll throw out, whether it's, you'll realize, you know, $4 million, $5 million, but I'm sure that number's probably within 20 to 30% at a minimum of what they throw out there. So that's one cost realized, is you'll get new assets, revenue should go up. The other is the amount of time that our staff spend either going out. So if someone moves into a tenant situation, they move in to move out, we put people in a vehicle to go read a meter, every time. If there's a meter error, whatever it is, we put someone in a truck to drive out there. Plus, meter reads right now, that whole exercise takes about three weeks. That's one of the reasons why we don't do monthly billing. This will move you to monthly billing, which would also, it doesn't lower rates essentially, but it takes it to a monthly, which probably makes it more affordable if you're budgeting. Plus, it gives us more flexibility in a cash accrual process by having more cash on hand. So that's a project that somewhere in the future, I'd like to bring at a minimum to the Board of Directors to consider for approval. So just an overall project cost. We went through a lot of these, so it's not a combined total. it's not a combined total because obviously if you look at Perkins Corner, for example, you got two different options up there. Perkins Corner new plant, the maximum that was projected was 14 million, our decommissioning is 3.6. So this is just, you kind of go through, and if you were to pick a project, that was the estimated cost at that time. Line of credit funding project recommendations, and, and I tread lightly on this. This is just recommendations. Obviously that number exceeds the existing line of credit balance of $15 million. And any of these projects would have to have board approval. So decisions would have to be made if, if we're decommissioning facilities. If you're running, if you're doing that, are you running water lines at the same time? Obviously the Hop Yard Farms upgrades, if, if you are rerouting flow. So there's just decisions that would have to be made. You know, far as my recommendations, and, and this is just a recommendation, I realize these are county and, and, and service authority, both joint discussions because there's, there's growth that the county's got to decide what they want. So we don't get ahead of the county. But we need to know, you know, where are your growth areas? So other than the comp plan, you know, that's really the main thing we look at or any zoning cases that come through. If, if there is no other development coming through in a relatively matter in the next, you know, couple of years, then, you know, I would recommend to you decommissioning the two dated facilities, reroute at the Hop Yard that could handle that flow. What's not up here is we would apply for other types of funding. The WQIF funding, the General Assembly allowed what they call conveyance language. That's another word for decommissioning. They would cover a percentage. It's not given 100%. If you were upgrading that Perkins plant, you would qualify for WQIF funding, but it's a percentage of the nutrient treatment, not percentage of the project. So historically, I think we've received about 30% for that. But that would be considered at the time of the application reviewed by DEQ. And then the, um, the AMI meter project. So all of those total up to 17.9 million. I'm well aware that's more than the 15, and I'm well aware that they're, you know, not looking for action tonight. But it's really putting out there the projects that we have been tracking for the last at least couple of years. And the line of credit funding, the timeline of decision of whether you're turning money in or you're terming a portion into long-term debt is the year, I think it's June 2025. So I know we're in 2021. I'm just putting that out there as a planning purpose. You know, those funds have to be spoken for. Obviously the board directors will give that direction. But those are the recommendations if you were to use any line of credit funding. Next steps, this was just thrown out there is, is the board would have to have discussion and ultimately provide me direction on the projects and the funding. And then from there, it would help me establish the service authority CIP. I've gone back and looked at the service authority CIP, and it hasn't been really active probably since 2013. I would like to give the board directors a CIP. I did notice in the county CIP, which I believe goes through 2024, 2025, Perkins and, and Oakland were listed in two different years, but in, and, and listed out, I think at four and a half million dollars. If you go look at the CIP. So that's not me saying you've committed to it. I'm just saying when I review documents. But I would like to deliver to the board of directors an active CIP, but I just need direction on, on what projects. And if it is no projects, it, it's whatever the board gives me, but those are the projects that we are tracking based on the studies that you have paid for to, to, to be completed. And then lastly, obviously whatever board discussion you choose to have and any questions and answers you have for me here tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weekly. Since the board of directors is probably a little more versed in what the current needs are, I'm going to allow the board of supervisors to ask questions first, if you all don't mind. So let's mix it up today. Let's start with Mr. Bush. Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Weekly, for your, for your presentation. So I, I want to take a little trip back in time and get some clarity on a couple of things. First, we discussed Perkins Corner and the line of credit. So when the line of credit was established, I was the signature authority on that by direction of the board of supervisors because I was chairman that year. It was my understanding that, that line of credit was to build up current infrastructure needs that had been determined through consent orders or direction of the general manager of the service authority. These things have been identified. That's why we went along with the line of credit. In our discussions back at that time, and correct me if I'm wrong, the determination was made that Perkins Corner would not be decommissioned. Rather, it would be rebuilt because we had went ahead and put that in not just our comprehensive plan, but our economic development strategic plan, that that area was going to be centralized as a primary settlement area, not just for residential growth, but for it to be able to accommodate commercial growth as well. Without Perkins Corner, you're, we would be spending money to pipe things over to Hop Yard Farm along with Oakland Park. Eventually you're going to meet capacity over there. And my concern is with DEQ and our withdrawal limits from the aquifer, we're going to be shooting ourselves in the foot. And I'd like to remind everybody that when, before my time, I'm sure Travis remembers this, you had Silver who wanted to do a development over there on 3301. And they were actually going to pay for all the infrastructure and expand service authority capabilities down in that intersection. Five years later, King George County gave the $1 million to extend a pipeline to attract their supply. So I think if we're looking at this from an economic development standpoint, I'm, I'm, I'm really troubled by the fact that we're even looking at decommissioning Perkins Corner. But more so, what were those meetings that we had a year ago? Because if we're going to decommission Perkins Corner, I basically think our economic development strategic plan and our current comprehensive plan are just pretty words on paper and belong in the trash can. At some point, we, we need to look at what are we going to do to expand the customer base? Because all those, all those costs are going to be passed on to, what is it, 4,000 customers? And then the current debt service runs out in 2036. And yes, like you pointed out, that's based on existing debt service. Well, with all the capital improvements and stuff that we have to do, the revenues don't match what we have to invest into the service authority. So that, that debt's going to continually build up, not really go down. So I have, I have a lot of concerns. I think we need to be looking at this from an investment standpoint, rebuild Perkins Corner and expand our customer base. And from the customer aspect, they can't afford to pay more. They just simply can't. For what they're paying and what their return on their investment is, it doesn't match up. So I'm, I'd like to get some clarity on where we are on Perkins Corner because I, I was under the assumption we made that determination a year ago. Thank you.
Mr. Weekly, would you care to respond, sir?
Yes. So let me start back. The, the $15 million line of credit, when the list was given to, to VRA, that list comprised of the pump station project, Perkins Corner, Oakland Park, the Hop Yard Farms upgrades and the new solids handling with some of the funds left over. I believe it was under $1 million for water. At that time, the, there was development on the horizon. We went through and looked at the Perkins Corner upgrade. And with that upgrade, it made economical sense where you could fund a facility. Right now, to, to address your question of where we're at, there's been no movement of a new facility or rerouting. That was one of the reasons to call for this meeting because that determination hasn't been given to me of build a new facility or decommission. Certainly we will tee that up and, and move forward. I will say far as the development, the Perkins Corner allocation, flow would go to Hop Yard if that's what the board decided if it was decommissioned. The allocation, which is that 0.5 MGD, we currently set at 0.12. We need to apply for an expansion, get the five mil, uh, the, the 0.5 million, million gallons per day allocation transferred to Dogron. You can't transfer the allocations within river basins. So Perkins River Basin, their allocation goes to Potomac as well as Dogron. The other three facilities is associated with Rappahannock. What that allows you to do, if, if later on you wanted to build another Perkins or if you wanted to expand Dogron and, and take the flow, whatever may develop around 3 or 301 corridor and send it to Dogron, which is a long ways. It's, it's nine plus miles. Maybe take a half mile. I think we have some infrastructure near, you know, that, that intersection of 301 and Dogron Road. There is an expense, but the opportunity, you, you won't lose that allocation. You'll just have to make a decision. New plant. My concern, and I speak solely for myself and taking the information you just given, sir, if we spend the $14 million for that facility, let's go to this one here, we only can construct at that site, a half million gallon per day facility. We have no other outfall allocation. Those outfall allocations across the state of Virginia were pretty much determined in 2010. So you either had those capabilities of allocation on the receiving stream or you're buying credits. We have a lot of capacity remaining in Dogron, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, of, of just under 700,000 gallon per day reserve capacity. So certainly you can transfer allocation within the same basin, Perkins to Dogron, Dogron here. But that's just my concern here, which you said, sir, with all respect, I'm not, I'm going to go any way the board wants. I'm just mentioning the $14 million to construct that new facility and, and going back to some of these other needs of being able to address. Pump stations, we're trying to do within operating budgets. But if there's any interconnecting or, or other projects we need to do, it'll leave zero of the line of credit. But certainly you can handle development by rerouting. You can handle development through, and plant upgrade as, as you outline. It's just any flow to Perkins Corner will be maxed at a half million gallon per day. So anything beyond that would have to be rerouted to Hop Yard or infrastructure would have to be constructed to, to Dogron.
Is it with regard to the same issue or is it a different issue? I'll allow a brief question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So rerouting, if we were to reroute, would that have any impact on future economic growth in that area? So if we rerouted, we would still be able to develop this area at 3301 that we identified without upgrading or rebuilding Perkins Corner? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yes, sir. And, and I'll even go a little further. When the Perkins Corner PER was completed, it looked at three potential developments on the horizon. One was on the book. That was the Villages. The other two was Mr. Boynton's property, which was about 270 units off Indian Town Road. And the other was 660 units with Mr. Webb. Like I said, two of those three never made it before the plant commissioner or the board. So that was roughly 1,390 units that was looked at, plus some commercial with the Villas project. So when we looked at that, that's what, where we used flow totals to be able to see if we, the new plant certainly could handle that, or the rerouting could handle that. Hop Yard Farms has a flow, and I don't mean to bore you with, with data. Hop Yard Farms has two flow tiers in the existing permit, 375,000 gallon per day and a flow tier of half million gallons per day. But that site is expandable and has the potential to go to 1 million gallons per day. So there is reserve there. But again, one of the things I'm going to be tracking with the board of supervisor who determines the growth in this county, is there any movement along that 301 corridor because of the nice bridge upgrade, uh, upgrade, which will bring more value? So I wish we had a valuation already done on the estimate to, to take it from there. I, I know the, the, the late Mr. Veezy had sketched that out at one time on a paper, getting it to Dogron. But it would be nice to know that amount of cost because that may be an option the, the board wants to go. It would certainly facilitate 3301 as you outlined, but Hop Yard Farms could take that flow, sir. The new facility that was outlined, and I could flip back if you like, you will hit that pretty quickly. That alone, forgive me, I'm trying to, there. The blue line is 50 units per, per year. So, you know, if you had 200 units, you know, in four years, you'd see where your flow is and so forth. If you got into multiple communities, you can easily hit that capacity of a half million gallon per day. So again, that's my concern. We can handle the flow at Hop Yard. There would have to be some upgrade of force main. We may even have to look to put an equalization basin in that facility. There was not something there to, to store the flow. So you're processing an even amount. But you can handle it at Hop Yard. You can handle some through Perkins, but eventually you would hit, hit max capacity after the new plant. Or if the board decides to say, hey, let's evaluate, send in flow to Dogron. We just do not have that number, sir. But those are your options far as growth. Yes, sir.
Ms. Bender.
Mr. Weekly, could you go back to the last slide that you had all the projects listed? Thank you. I've talked to Mr. Weekly a lot and Mr. Hoagland about the service authority and its future. And in the, I bring up all those projects there is because those are all the things that need to do to bring the service authority fully out of the hospital, is how I'm going to put it. And, and the numbers are big because we didn't do some things in the past and, and here they all are outlined. And I know Mr. Weekly has looked a lot at Hop Yard and, and there is capacity to build it a little bigger, correct, Mr. Weekly? I think it's a million?
Yes, ma'am.
And so it all works.
If I may, just not misleading, if you went to a million, there are things you would have to maybe add another SBR tank. There would be some tankage.
But from what I understand is most, most, and I'll say most meaning the bigger localities and cities, have one or two regional plants. They don't have five, which makes it more efficient to be able to run and handle the solids. So having three as opposed to five does make sense. And to be able to afford it in the end, and, and I just see all of those things are very important. But what we have to do as a board is make decisions. And we can't just keep pushing it away and thinking about it because we know development is coming on 301 because of the bridge. And I liked your idea, Mr. Weekly, once when you mentioned it to me going to Dogron, but that would have to be investigated for Perkins Corner. And we don't, we can't get a lot of grants because we have a higher median income, even though the courthouse system is not served, is most of our federal buildings and our school board buildings, schools. But it's, they're just important. And I, I hope my colleagues really look at this list and see what we can do. Because I think we could do, I mean, we can't do it all right now, but we can make a plan, a capital improvement plan that we could maybe accomplish this together and help unburden the citizens by being able to provide the infrastructure for people to come and have commercial or have more residential houses. Because one of the other I've heard is because a lot of places have the infrastructure already put there. So it makes it easier to attract. So I just ask my colleagues to just think really hard and think out of the box of how we could, these are all ways to save the service authority. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Stonehill.
Thank you, Mr. Weekly, for your presentation. And I'll have to say, this is definitely my, uh, my weakest part is the service authority for me. I know that the Perkins Corner plant, you said, needed a lot of work. And, you know, it doesn't allow for much growth for that so-called golden triangle that we refer to. But like you told Mr. Bush, with some upgrades, we could get to, you said a half a million?
Sir.
That's what we, that's what it handles right now?
No, sir. It currently is permitted at 120,000. So that's 0.12. But we can, we had the outfall allocation to increase the permit to a half million gallon per day.
And then anything above that would have to go to Oakland?
It, it would have to go either Hop Yard or some other facility. Yes, sir. If, if, you'd have to define the facility, but it could not increase more than 0.5.
Okay, I meant Hop Yard. I'm sorry. And then the Oakland Park plant, I know you said just like three years ago, it just got some TLC and everything. We're not expecting a whole lot of growth out that way, like you've said, except outside of the industrial park and everything. Why, why decommission that? Is that in that bad of a shape that it needs to be done? Is that in that bad of a shape that it needs to be done? Or are we just going to, is that just part of the consolidation factor we're looking at?
So a very good question. You're spot on about the growth that we talked about. There's not a lot of growth. I mean, even if you land, which I hope the county lands many folks in that industrial park. It's good for the tax base. So there is room to handle sewage flow there. In the feasibility study, it lays out about, you know, options. You could choose which one to go with first. Oakland Park has some life left. There was some filter rehabilitation. The Board of Directors approved funding last year. In this existing budget, we just replaced the two blowers out there. That was featured in the Virginia Rule Water Streamline article a couple of months ago. Energy efficiency. So Oakland is one that you have some time on. I think what's going to be deciding factors out there, sir, for that plant to come offline is the amount of capacity remaining. So if obviously demand outweighs the supply or the capacity, any permit regulations there. We escaped what was known as the WIP 3, which was looking at putting very stringent nitrogen and phosphorus limits. So by design, we could not continue to meet what would be the new limits. However, they are now analyzing a new ammonia limit, a very low limit. So we would have to look at that. There will be some time to provide comment to DEQ on that. So any permit regulation that the existing treatment process could not handle beyond its current treatment design, that would be something that would definitely cause me to recommend decommissioning. But if there's no growth out there and our permit was left alone, you have some time. You would naturally do some upgrades. The headworks, for example, that screens what comes to a treatment plant. Maybe, you know, 10 plus years down the road, you'll be replacing the disinfection system. Tankage would be determined. So those tanks, it wasn't uncommon for a package plant. You'd have these steel tanks put in the ground. You know, the 60s, the 70s, they did it. Even in the 80s, in some localities, they did it. So it's the integrity of the tank. So occasionally you will, and what's good about this, we have flow where we can manage. It's not at its max capacity. We can take a plant offline, pump it down and look at it. So assuming the tank integrity itself stays in shape, you can easily push that plant another five years. But it would be those factors of regulation, permit limits. If something were to change in tank integrity, or where you don't have capacity for the development that's looking to go in that area that would drive that plant to go offline. Perkins is a different animal. I encourage anyone to come out and look at Perkins. The tank integrity, I have concerns. The headworks does need to be replaced majorly overhauled. The filtration may have a little more life. These are all just processes within the treatment plant. But that plant, in my professional opinion, not just by the feasibility study, but my professional opinion, it has reached its end of life. And that one, if you say pick one, I'm not going to say I'm begging here tonight, but I highly recommend at some point in the future to both respective boards for some type of determination made on that facility, whether it's an upgrade or rerouting. That plant is in dire need of replacement or an upgrade. So Oakland Park, you have some time. And I didn't mean to ramble. Did I answer all your questions, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Granger.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Weekly, thank you for coming and for the presentation. Hopyard, if we're to go from half a million to a million, do you have like an estimated cost for that kind of activity?
I do not, sir, and I apologize. I will take a note here and come back to the board. I do know that currently the two SBRs, that treatment, it all takes place in one tank. We have two of those. So if you're going to a million gallons, you're going to have to add at least another tank, possibly two more. So I will certainly see if I can get some type of cost estimates and hints estimates and bring back to the board. I can shoot out an email to both bodies and provide that. But I do not have that tonight, sir.
That's okay. You also brought up there would need to be some upgrades to. So if you decommission Oakland Park and you decommission Perkins, there's still some upgrades for, I guess, pumping it to Hopyard that would have to be done at Hopyard. What if you're only to decommission one? Would it still be the 2.9 million for upgrades to get that? Like, let's say it was Perkins. Because that one sounds like it's more problematic. And let's say we were to hold off on Oakland. Would it still be 2.9 million just for one? Like, does it not matter if it's both of them or is it, just trying to figure that out?
Yeah, yes, sir. That number would drop, I would say easily, you know. That number would come down from 2.9, probably somewhere around 2 million, maybe a little less. You wouldn't need the same size force main unless you want it to run two. As I've mentioned earlier, you wouldn't need the same size force main. You're running a much smaller force main. And depending on the pump configuration. So there are existing pump stations at both sanitation districts that bring flow to a plant. In this case, you are reversing flow. So whether there's some upsizing of pumps at existing stations, or maybe they have the current capacity, there may be a way with existing pump stations to push that flow. The last station is on Inaugural Drive. If you're heading towards Hopyard, there may be enough to be able to push that there. That analysis, that'd be done. But certainly that number would come down to, you know, at least 2 million because you're not running segments of pipe that would account for the upsizing of two flows.
So let's pretend you were to decommission Perkins Corner and add that force main that you're speaking of. And then five years down the road, you're like, wow, we need to take down Oakland Park. And then reroute that as well. Does, would it make more sense to put in the larger force main at the initial time? Because you're like, well, it's just going to, you're going to have 2 million now and maybe 2 million later. So you're going to spend 4 million as opposed to, let's say, just do, you know, it's going to cost more now, but it will be less and longer.
So I generally don't like to share prior jurisdiction stories because it usually high rolls like, oh, my goodness, he's talking about in the locality. But my experience in Culpeper County, that's when they put in Eastern View High School. There were some other growth across 29 there. And I bring it into relevant to your point. They viewed it as an interim plant, which is odd to me, like, you know, you got to have a long-term thing. You generally don't pick these things up like Legos and sit them down over here. So they put in two different force mains, and they use the HDP pipe, which you fuse together. It's a long-lasting pipe. And Travis will take questions on that. But it was cheaper at the time. There was a cost to it. But they chose to run a six and an eight inch for there. And their flows obviously were a little bit different. But they did that. Lo and behold, later on, they took that facility offline. They pumped that all back to the town of Culpeper's plant. So there's a cost savings if you're looking at as far as what I do for future planning. But there's going to be a, there's a cost to it to doing it at that time. But to me, if everything's forecasting, and there's some cost to, I put it in for Perkins, forgive me. There were some cost analysis in here where you're looking at over 20 years as the plant degrades of roughly around $270, $280,000 a year at the cost to operate and maintain that plant. So there is a cost of keeping that plant going and deferring the upgrade of the line. So there would be a cost savings, but it's money upfront. But because of the time of construction, if you're 10 or 20 years from now, sure, naturally, pipe has gone up, labor has gone up, so.
So no, if you'd be like taking, you'd be like, hey, we built it. Now we're going to rip out what we already did and then put in something different.
Well, what you would do, and if you built in that scenario, assuming I'm tracking right, sir, where you're just building a pipe from Perkins to Hopyard, and you say, we're not doing Oakland Park. You didn't build the interceptor from Oakland Park to Hopyard. Then you wouldn't, you wouldn't essentially rip out, well, abandon would be the term, but essentially the same thing. If you later on came in and said, all right, let's reroute Oakland, then you're building the infrastructure that you haven't down to Fort Conway and Route 3 intersection. Then you're installing a larger line from that intersection to the wastewater plant. You would be abandoning, it's about a mile, I think, worth of distance from that intersection to the wastewater plant. Usually pipe is about a million a mile on rough estimate. So you would be abandoning some of that infrastructure, yes.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, so I appreciate. No, that's good. I appreciate it. Do you know what kind of cost saving? Let's pretend Perkins, only Perkins Corner comes off. What kind of cost savings for the customers from a day-to-day operations running thing like on a, for the year, would that be? Because I'm assuming now you're not running that plant, but Hopyard's got more capacity, so there might be more chemicals, more work that needs to be done. So that might go up. Just trying to understand.
Going to my calculator, by the way. I'm not answering text messages.
No, I figured.
So the question is if Perkins came offline, basically the annual savings from that going to Hopyard. So again, that was estimated somewhere around 280, just under 290,000 a year, over 20 years, so 5.6 million.
Over 20 years?
Yes, sir.
Is it roughly the same for Oakland Park?
They did give roughly the same estimate. I think they came out to about 500 and it was around 560, 570 for both plants to come offline. That's the savings over 20 years.
Okay.
They, I don't quite understand the engineering units of the factor, but that's what they said, the cost, the annual cost over 20 years. Annual cost of 200, roughly 280,000 over 20 years. They had the same estimate roughly for Oakland Park. So you're essentially at what, 560,000 a year over 20 years?
Tracking.
A year, probably somewhere near 12 million.
Tracking. I got one last question. And I thought, I just want to clarify, because I want to make sure what I heard was what you said, and that I'm not misunderstanding something. If Perkins Corner, Perkins Corner was to come offline and be rerouted to Hopyard, and that doesn't mean that we would lose the permit for that area. So like, let's say five, 10 years down the line, 20 years down the line, could we build another plant at that location? Because it's now, hey, Hopyard's reached capacity. We aren't using this permit we had, which is going to the Potomac. And then could we build a plant there to facilitate more growth in the county?
Yes, sir. So as the regulations are now, and I'm not trying to give you legal talk.
Understood.
Matt can appreciate that. But as the regs right now, because I asked that question of our permit writer and higher up folks at DEQ. You could, if you transfer that allocation from Perkins to Dogron right now, and later on, two, five years, 15 years from now, said, hey, let's build a new site, you can pull allocation back.
Okay.
Because they call it bubbled. It's in the Potomac, bubble the Potomac Basin. You can pull it back. You won't lose the allocation. I think regardless, obviously, if you go the route of a new plant, we need to jump on and get to half million gallon per day. I actually think that's the right avenue to go, even if you're not building a new facility. That permit is coming up for renewal a year from now. So I think it would be smart to increase the flow tier to a half million gallon per day. And then if and when a board, a board decides on whichever project, we have that flow tier.
Even if we don't build, like, there's no facility there, you still go for the half?
That permit wouldn't be active. But that allocation goes down to Dogron, which is, we also have, I'm going to call them basin permits. It tracks the Potomac allocation.
Thank you.
But we will not lose that allocation.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience with me. Understood.
Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Weekly, for your presentation. I'm really just going to ask some clarifying questions, maybe to clarify some of the points that were asked by other people more than anything else. Do you have an estimate of what the, what Hopyard at buildout would be on its own in MGD? How many, how many MGD would be processed at Hopyard on their buildout?
So initially, and the developers put forth this in a study. And a lot of times, the sewer tracks the water. So if you're saying out there, commercial full buildout in the homes was expected just under 400,000 gallon per day. However, and we've had this discussion with Hazel, that with half of their development already constructed, we were only seeing about 55,000 gallons per day. They are now at about, I want to say, 537 homes of the 898 that was approved. And so we're, you can double to 55, but we feel like 125,000 is very realistic. If you want to push that number to 150 for commercial. But I wouldn't go further beyond that because what we're seeing versus what was projected are not aligned. And that's a good thing in our favor when you're talking about rerouting or taking other flow.
So basically what you're saying, for half the price of building a new plant, rerouting Perkins to Hopyard, you have almost twice the capacity if you do a slight increase by increasing it to a million gallons. Because you'll have what, 875,000 gallon, million gallons per day capacity, which is nearly double what Perkins could put out even on its best day, permit-wise?
Yes, sir. And all of your facilities, regardless of their capacity size, you want to, the number you want to track is 95% because DEQ's got a provision, a permit, that once you exceed 95% for three consecutive months, you must submit an action plan. Are you reducing flow? Are you upgrading? What are you doing? So, yes, sir, that is accurate as stated. No more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Morris.
Mr. Weekly, can you bring back the slide with Perkins? And it had that information you were just saying with the state, when it reaches 95%.
Is this the buildout when we're looking at development? That's the buildout slide.
No, you actually had numbers. It had like a 70 or 75%. We had to do this, and it's at 95%. The state wants that.
This here? I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, it had to do with the flow of the plants.
Oh.
And what DEQ requires us.
Right there.
I think it's the fourth.
Yeah, yes, sir. And.
Which I think that's part of what you just alluded to.
So when we looked at that number, that number's important. So when we were looking at the development that was, you know, for this site, we had to track that because we went into an service agreement. The Board of Directors approved that. So we had to make sure, how much capacity did we have for that development? We knew we couldn't just go right into 100%. So when we talked about the amount of, you heard ERCs, equivalent residential connections, that they were saying, we're going to purchase. And then that would allow revenue for that project, revenue for us to serve some of it while we were figuring out, figuring out the resolution. New plant or rerouting. But 95% of any permit, yes, sir, is which we track internally to make sure that we're not getting up. And we'll track it even sooner. Once, you know, if we're hitting 88, 90%, we're like, okay, what's on the horizon for development? Because once you hit 95% and you do it for three consecutive months, it triggers things from DEQ. So that's the 95%, 114,000 gallon per day.
And we're at 70,000 right now with Perkins.
Yes, sir.
So we're quickly approaching that 114 number.
Yes, sir.
And as it stands now, if I understand it correctly, Perkins will not meet the current regs that the state is putting out for the quality of our output.
So Perkins.
The plant would either need significant upgrades to meet the state requirements or be taken offline.
So we escaped the WIP 3 that was proposed. The ammonia, new limits are being drafted. They're not finalized. Depending on what they look like and what we anticipate, it would struggle with that facility. I am coming at the recommendation of, yes, that's an unknown, but that could trigger it. But we're nearing the life of the plant as it exists. Its structural integrity, its consistent treatment functionality and meeting that permit. So we had about a good year and a half. We've had a couple of upsets in the last couple of months in meeting permit. And that's either equipment failure or, I know we replaced a valve on the plant that returned some flows. So that plant as it sits, the integrity of it is why I'm raising my hand and saying that, you know, we need to address it. From the capacity standpoint, to serve development, sure, any sizable development. If I flip back to that chart. if I flip back to that chart that tracks, you know, so many units per year, you can see that projection of when we hit the half million gallon. That plant, I think when I brought it before the board, when we considered the recent development, there's about 205 equivalent residential connections. We have sold a few water-only primarily accounts, so we have to track that, so we don't overcommit. But there's a limit amount left for development at the existing plant. It's the infrastructure or the integrity of that plant that I'm highly concerned about, sir.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cleveland, online, do you have any questions for Mr. Weekly?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleveland. So, Mr. Weekly, I had a question. You mentioned the industrial park several times and capacity. Would we still, and that was with regard to wastewater, with regard to water service, would we still have capacity to meet the needs of potential breweries or microbreweries? Because the zoning we designated for that, when we adopted that ordinance last year, was industrial and light industrial, and I note that that's the zoning for the industrial park?
Good, very good question. So I will educate myself on a brewery, their monthly usage, and look over that over. If there's a business that has that data for at least three to five years, so we can look at their consumption, naturally there's some water involved in that. Oakland Park has a good portion of capacity remaining in the water, but I will educate myself more on the brewery. That doesn't concern me as much as if we were using it, say, for a greenhouse usage or something like that, watering large amounts, or providing water to a hydroponic farm, or something that uses massive, massive amount of water. So I apologize, let me educate myself on the brewery to see what a monthly and annual usage looks like, and then I'll, we'll send that around, along with the other follow-up that Mr. Granger had asked. I'll send an email out to both boards regarding the brewery question.
And then if you could also, you just mentioned greenhouse. I don't know what the greenhouse's current plans are with regard to expansion or future business models, but if you could take a look at that too, and work with Mr. Cusenberry, and with Mr. Minor, our Director of Economic Development, I think, because we need him to be able to do his job, so, and we need to give him all the tools we can. Thank you.
Absolute. The greenhouse operations, are we referring to Blumia, for example? So they are being handled with, some of these sites have great water supply. I wish we had the wells. So that's how they're handling that. The other way you could, but we don't have the infrastructures, reclaimed water, that's treated effluent from a wastewater plant, going through a pipe to an end user. So we don't have that infrastructure, that's an expense, and you definitely would have to have a defined user. But I certainly will work with both gentlemen to see any needs, current needs or future needs.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cusenberry, do you have anything you wish to add to the discussion, sir?
Madam Chair, just one item. Mr. Granger asked a question about the force main size going to Hoppyard. It may be that the larger force main may only be like two inches in diameter larger, or probably no more than four inches in diameter larger, to meet the need for both decommissioning projects. But the one thing you've got to be careful of is make sure that you have, you don't have it too large, so you have some velocity problems in your force main.
Thank you very much. All right, is everyone satisfied then with the discussion? And as a reminder, the purpose of this joint work session was for discussion, to make sure that the supervisors, and I know at one point, Mr. Granger, you were a member of the Board of Directors, but to make sure that all of the supervisors get an update as to where the Service Authority Board of Directors is, and so that everyone could learn a little bit about the current needs and future planning of the Service Authority. So I want to thank everyone for your participation in the discussion tonight. But again, we don't need to make any decisions tonight, that's not what we're here for quite yet. I want to thank Mr. Weekly and your staff for the presentation tonight. And if there's no other business to come before the Service Authority Board of Directors, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Service Authority Board of Directors.
I make a motion to adjourn the Service Authority Board of Director meeting until Thursday, March 18th, at 5:30 PM at Fire Station 1.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Ms. Cleveland, did you respond, ma'am?
Oh, yes, I did, aye.
Thank you. Opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries, the Service Authority Board of Directors is adjourned. This meeting is hereby adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting on March 18th, 2021, at 5:30 PM at Company One Headquarters. That meeting may be held by electronic means and/or remote participation only, and may be closed to the public being physically present. All citizens are encouraged to participate in advance or during the meeting by electronic means as provided by the county. So I will note for the record, then, we will resume the Board of Supervisors meeting, which has not been conducted pursuant to electronic means. Mr. Cusenberry, do we have any amendments to the agenda, sir?
No, Madam Chair, no amendments.
Very good. Public comment, comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. Is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to address the Board of Supervisors? Mr. Dines, do you have anyone online? Do we have? I'm sorry? We have no one online, correct? Thank you, Mr. Dines. I do want to note for the record, did any member receive correspondence? Yes, Mr. Granger.
I apologize, I was just looking online, at least where we have it stated that we had a joint meeting at 5:00 to 9:30, and then it says a Board of Supervisors meeting from 6:30 to 9:00. Just asking, I guess my question would be to Mr. Britton, with the way it was advertised, are we within the bounds of propriety to have, continue having the meeting now? Or should we recess until 6:30 officially?
Mr. Britton, can you hear us, sir?
Yes, I can. Lawyers are, I guess the bear is a bad news. If it was advertised, I think Mr. Granger is correct of looking, calling it order. If it was advertised at 6:30 for public comment, we're going to need to recess until 6:30.
Very good, thank you, gentlemen. So we will recess and resume at 6:30, so that we may take a public comment at the advertised time on the website. Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's resume the meeting of the Board of Supervisors where we left off, public comment. So let me begin by asking, is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to provide public comment? Please step forward to the podium. Is the microphone on at the podium, gentlemen? Could someone check for our speaker, please? Go ahead, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Marsha Stonehill, 17094 Ferry Dock Road. I'm here to read a letter for, on behalf of RBAHC, the Ralph Bunch Arts and Humanities Center that was written to you, the Board of Supervisors, on March 10, 2021. The letter reads as follows. Dear Madam Chair and Supervisors of the Board, we are writing in response to the letter received from the interim county administrator on March 4, 2021. Kristin Shields Esquire reached out to Matthew Britton, county attorney, in an effort to receive direction as to what steps will be necessary to move forward with the RBAHC development. The county attorney deferred any direction back to the Board of Supervisors. Please allow RBAHC an opportunity to share with each of you the substantial progress we have made behind the scenes. It is unfortunate that a detail in the letter of intent that is erroneous went unnoticed all this time by all parties involved. RBAHC is eager to work with you to find a solution as we have an option agreement that would be ready for your review immediately. We have many emails and letters that demonstrate our regular communication with county employees and staff that will help you to understand why this is an unfortunate oversight. Two letters are attached as a partial demonstration of our diligence. Legally, RBAHC would not be able to do any fundraising for a county-owned property without a legal and binding option agreement. We have generated hope, support, and enthusiasm, and we are ready to proceed with the necessary steps you direct us to so we can move forward. Sincerely, the officers of the Board, that includes Dora Johnson, Treasurer, Melanie Ochs, Secretary, and myself, President. Further, in honor of Black History Month, in cooperation with the King George NAACP, the following interviews were conducted. Al Bumbry, former Major League Baseball player; George Tolliver, Associate Vice President of Referee Operations with the NBA; Sherman Parker, retired corporate executive from a Fortune 500 company; the Sandlot Baseball Players, a group of men who reminisce about their baseball games in the 50s and 60s when black people were not permitted to play with white people. Included in that panel was Royal Burnett, Kelly Jefferson, Stanley Jefferson, Walt Garnett, Ron Lewis, and George Tolliver. Further, we interviewed Alice Moore, retired King George County Treasurer; Brian and Michelle Williamson, an interracial couple, share of their experiences; and finally, Harold Jefferson, retired from NASA. Also, please note the tribute made to the American Legion Post 329. These individuals are from King George County and have accomplished great things. Go to Operation Flow Podcast if you are interested in hearing their stories. Due to the level of participation, there are more to come as a continuation of Black History in King George. These recordings are transferable to RBAHC when RBAHC is operational. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stonehill. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward to provide public comment? Go ahead, sir. Please state your name and address, and as a reminder, you are limited to three minutes.
Michael Hayes, 2637 Canal Road, Farnham, Virginia. So I speak in front of you before today, no longer as a King George resident, but I'm speaking on behalf of the RBAHC as well. I was recruited last year to help RBAHC with an operations budget, and I've been involved since that time. So while I'm no longer a resident of King George, I still have a vested interest in this project and plan to see it through till the end. And I still have property in King George, still have business in King George, friends, and as most of you know, I'm a member of the King George Rotary, which has not changed with my move as well. So in helping with the operations budget, my wife and I are also big supporters of Colonial Williamsburg, and Colonial Williamsburg's motto is so that the future can learn from the past. And I think this historical landmark presents that opportunity for us to do that in King George County. An opportunity to have such a positive educational, cultural, social impact in our community that I don't believe currently exist or exists anywhere close to here. With the correct legal documents in place for the transfer of this property, I think we have the ability to just resurrect this building, but also preserve this building for future generations. As Ms. Stonehill has already talked about, we have a lot of interest from donors and conversations that we've had, but without that document in place, we cannot start to gain traction and support with dollars coming in to help with that building of the foundation and the resources that we need. We've put together an operations budget with some very conservative estimates, and those estimates, we believe, show that the Ralph Bunch property can be self-sustaining without the need for county resources or further future commitments from the county's budget. And I can't tell you how much we believe that we took a very conservative approach in trying to pressure test what we need from income and expenses to do that. And I hope you will make this a passion over the advocates that you're hearing from, not only this evening. I know you've got emails, and hopefully some other folks are going to speak online tonight to make this passion a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here in the audience who wishes to provide public comment? I will move on to online. Mr. Dines, is there anyone online who wishes to provide public comment?
Hello, yes, ma'am. My name is Christopher Brown.
Stand by, Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown, please stand by.
Yes.
Yeah, we have not recognized you in the boardroom yet. Mr. Dines was in the process of recognizing a Ms. Dora Johnson. So, Mr. Dines, if you could go ahead and queue up Ms. Dora Johnson, if you're ready to speak, it is your turn, ma'am.
Hello, yes, my name is Dora Johnson. Address is 9265 Sandy Beach Lane. I am the Treasurer of Ralph Bunch Arts and Humanitarian Center. I have been on the Board for around three years. I would just like to ask the county to please allow RBAHC to continue on the hard work that we have started. I am in favor of supporting RBAHC, and I believe that if you allow us to continue on the project as we're moving forward, that you will love the end product, and I think that the county really needs to just allow us to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Dines, who do we have next, sir? Mr. Brown, Mr. Christopher Brown, it is now your turn in the queue, sir. Are you ready, sir?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Go ahead, sir. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, my name is Christopher Brown. My current address is 30603 Portabago Trail, Port Royal, Virginia. I'm a King George native, and I'm from the county, went through the, actually Ralph Bunch is my kindergarten school. It was integrated at the time. I went through King George Elementary, Middle, and High School, and a graduate of King George High School. My family is from King George, and just want to speak on behalf of the RBAHC movement and mission. I believe in the Ralph Bunch humanities mission. The county there has a, in our opinion, has a historical gem that means a lot to the natives of King George. Lot of history there. And I think that it's a great opportunity to represent where the county, especially the black community in the counties, come from, and almost also define where they're going. To forego the mission that Ms. Stonehill has started and other volunteers that have joined would be a travesty, if you will, to not, to take advantage of this great movement and support it, not only from the county, but the people that have already put their time and effort into the mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for your comment. Mr. Dines, is anyone else online that wishes to speak, sir? Very good, then. Any members receive comments in writing? So I received two. I will read three of them. I also want to make the public aware in the future, per the bylaws of the Board of Supervisors adopted for the 2021 session, comments in writing. The chair may also allow members of the public to submit comments in writing. Such written comments may be read in part or in whole, or submitted to the minutes without reading at the discretion of the chair or the member to whom the comments are addressed. So the member who received at least one of these comments and the chair are willing to entertain them tonight, but that may not always be the case. It is up So I, as chair, will read all three letters into the record. From Robert V. Gates, Ph.D., Dear Mr. Stonehill, I am unable to attend the Board of Supervisors meeting on 16 March 2021, but I wanted to send this to you as a public comment. I recently became a member of the Ralph Bunch Arts and Humanities Center RBH C board. Consequently, I was not part of any of the discussions that led up to the letter of intent between King George County and RBH C and cannot speak directly about that. I can, however, address why I became a board member. I joined the board in January 2021 for one simple reason: I believe that Ralph Bunch High School played an important role in local and indeed national history and needs to be preserved. It appeared to me that the effort that the RBH C was undertaking was a viable approach and should be given a chance to succeed. I was aware that there is some opposition to the RBH C plan, but I thought it would be possible to address these concerns as the plan was finalized if all parties worked together. I thought that I could help with both of these. I sincerely hope that the Board of Supervisors will continue to support the preservation of Ralph Bunch High School and will work with all interested parties to do that. Sincerely, Robert V. Gates, Ph.D., Dahlgren, Virginia 22448, 15 March 2021. March 16, 2021, from Melanie Ochs, if I said that correctly. Hello, Board of Supervisors. As a King George citizen, I am in favor of the RBH C development. After analyzing benefits and considerations, I am in favor for the following reasons. RBH C can provide a cultural identity that is indigenous to our area. RBH C could provide a space of art growth, music growth, and cultivation while providing its history for us to both learn and pay homage to the rich African-American heritage that is part of King George County. RBH C can provide diversification in business sectors. Countywide, there are not many diversified dining options or entertainment options in King George, nor are there family outings options. With support, RBH C can provide a place to go for entertainment and retain entertainment dollars within county lines without King George County citizens needing to travel outside the county for entertainment options. A large estimate of entertainment dollars, over 50%, is currently spent outside of the county at this time, providing both a missed opportunity in providing additional support to the local businesses while also missing out on potential county revenue. We currently have parks and recreation that are available for football, basketball, and other sport activities. And while these are important, it is also equally important that we incorporate STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and math initiatives that have huge economic and cultural benefits. Part of the reason my family moved from Alexandria to King George was from the rhetoric that STEM and STEAM is an integral part of King George and King George's economic and tourism. I believe RBH C can be the solution in having a tangible place of recognizing our STEAM progress that complements University of Mary Washington in Dahlgren and the Dahlgren Museum while also upholding the county mission. In addition, it provides recognition of that same progress that would not be here without those who graduated from our very own Ralph Bunch High School. Personally, I would like to have my children perform dance and theater locally without needing to travel to Westmoreland County, Fredericksburg, or the like, and other parents who are in the arts share the same sentiment. Allowing RBH C as a nonprofit to move ahead with the project will allow the community and property to properly develop without the interference of outside companies developing on property that is registered on the National Register of Historic Places. With support, allowing the community to continue to move forward will allow us to build together on its historical and cultural ground in our beloved Northern Neck region. So yes, there are many reasons as to why RBH C is a great solution for our county, and these listed were just a few. While I know there was confusion as to needing the option agreement in order for foundations and nonprofit development options to take RBH C funding proposal in the serious manner in which it is intended, we are placing in tremendous effort in this short time to lay the groundwork for gathering the assets on a building that has been laid dormant and in repair for decades. While I cannot speak to those that provide no confidence to the project, I expect that if those that have faith of a mustard seed in this endeavor and wishes for its success for the betterment of the county, their citizens, and for the greater good, I believe RBH C has the utmost potential to be a cultural powerhouse in the Northern Neck region and a safe haven of the multicultural advantages that King George already has in its land. We just need to allow ourselves to see it as the opportunity that is already here. As Ralph Bunch himself said, quote, "To make our way, we must have firm resolve, persistence, tenacity. We must gear ourselves to work hard all the way. We can never let up," end quote. Let us not give up on Ralph Bunch Arts and Humanities Center. Thank you for your time and consideration. Yours kindly, Melanie Ochs. And the last letter dated March 14, 2021, from Anna Maria Lovell, 10263 Roosevelt Drive. To Annie Cupka and county supervisors, I want to thank you for the job that you are doing for the county. I know it must be very hard, and we really do appreciate the job you are doing, but at the same time, the people of the county are depending on you to make the right decisions and do what's best for the county, especially with regarding the spending our tax dollars. I know you approved the five new schools buses, but I agree with Mr. Jeffrey Bush that we have to be careful with the county budget. We have to start planning what we will do if the income from the landfill should be lost. Another concern is the service authority. They have a large debt and have been charging outrageous prices for so many years. The county should help with this debt. The reserve and debt fees should be used to pay off this debt. Ways should be found to deal with the debt without putting an unnecessary burden on the customers of the service authority. I also want to thank Mr. Weekly for the job he is doing. He inherited a big mess with the service authority. Thank you all very much. Please make the right decisions for our county. Yours truly, Anna Maria. All right, and so with that, I will close public comment. And I also would remind members, there is a difference in the bylaws as to how comments in writing during public comment are to be addressed versus during a public hearing. So please take a moment when you can to look those over so that going forward, we can keep our meetings moving in an orderly fashion and address the needs of our citizens. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to reports of members of the board. Mr. Granger.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. First of all, just like to say thank you, everyone who came out and spoke, and thank you to all those who provided written correspondence. Ms. Cupka, thank you for reading those in, and just giving the opportunity for everyone to be heard. I know that they won't always necessarily be read in, but I think it was probably the right decision tonight to make sure all those voices were heard. So historically, we have tried a couple of times to find a way to have Ralph Bunch developed and restored, and it just hasn't worked out a couple of different times. And I remember the meeting back in 2019, Ralph Bunch Alumni Association came out and they spoke in opposition because we'd gone into agreements with certain entities, and it didn't work out, and so then it's just kind of sitting in limbo. And they had concerns. And so when we had the letter of intent, there were benchmarks put in place, and part of that was because of their concerns. Two board members voted in opposition of going with the letter of intent, and three of us voted in favor, you know, but that was the way it ended up going, and unfortunately, the benchmarks just weren't met. And so this is the state we're in right now. I appreciate your passion and desire to try to see this project fulfilled. I know the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association also wants to see fulfilled. You know, we'll have to reevaluate what we're going to do at this point because that's the situation we're in right now. The letter of intent has expired, and that's where we're at, and so we'll need to reevaluate and find the right way to move forward. So I appreciate you coming out there and speaking, and as a board, I'm sure we will deliberate on this and figure out what we want to do and what would be the best way to move forward. So thank you to all of you. I know we also had Anna Marie provide comment. I know she's normally here. Always appreciate hearing from her, and I appreciate her concerns about the financial state of the county. We certainly do have some challenging decisions to be made, and I think she has some good points. Other than that, I've been attending the, our budget work sessions, obviously. I'd like to say welcome to Mr. Cusenberry. It's nice to have you back here, sir, and appreciate having you here with your historical knowledge and everything you bring. So thank you for being here. Other than that, the only thing I have is, I'm just going to ask, I have an opening on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and so anyone out there, if you're interested, please reach out to me. We can discuss it. If you know anyone who might be interested, I'm having a hard time finding someone who would be willing to fill into this position. So if anyone's interested, please reach out to me. I'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill.
Just wanted to say thank you for everybody that came out and everybody that sent correspondence and called in. We really rely on the public's comment, so it's great when people come and speak in person and/or call in. So we continue, ask for people to continue to do so. Cusenberry, yes, thank you for stepping back up to help us through this changeover that we have going on, and your expertise will definitely be helpful. Wednesday, the 3rd, I, along with all of my colleagues, attended our first budget meeting of many, and thank you for the Citizen Advisory Budget Committee that comes and helps us for the budget. Thursday, the 4th, I listened in on the Comrail Meeting down in Dahlgren, it was hosted by Charles County this year. Talked to a lot of different updates on base, COVID, and a lot of different happenings that are in Charles County that are going along with Dahlgren and Indian Head. Friday, the 5th, I listened in on a Potomac River Fisheries Commission meeting, and they were talking about the health of the Potomac River and all the things that were going on that they were doing since the Potomac does border the north and east side of King George County. It's a very important resource for us. Saturday, the 6th, myself, Mrs. Cupka, participated in a Friends of Rappahannock Litter Pickup on Route 3. Until you actually get out and walk the road, it's amazing the amount of litter. We only went from Sealston Deli to the county line in four hours. That's as far as we made it. We picked up about 30 bags of trash in just that very short period of time right there. It was amazing. And just wanted to say thank you for the folks that did come out and help volunteer as well. I was talking to the Friends of Rappahannock, and there's a number of different things that you can do to cut down on trash here in King George County. One, secure your load, back of your pickup trucks and the trash trucks are probably our biggest violators. Folks that live on these major roads, clean up in front of your house. It's kind of like shoveling the sidewalk. If you shovel a little bit of a sidewalk right in front of your house, and your neighbors do it, and so on, and so on, so on, lo and behold, the whole sidewalk gets cleaned up. So if you can, pick out in front of your house and get your neighbors to do it as well. Another thing you can do is you can contact VDOT. They do have a great program with Adopt a Highway for people, businesses, and groups. You can help clean up the county and get free advertising for your business or group, which they will post up on the road. So it's a great thing. And then Saturday, 14th, I was at the finish line for the Sheets to Sheets Run. I did not run it, I drove to it. Great time for everybody. I think they said they had 198 runners out of 200 that signed up, and then they also had a couple of people that just jumped in there just to run for fun. Great event, everybody really enjoyed it. Everybody we spoke to said it was a great event. They were looking forward to it next year. And there were a lot of folks from out of town that partnered up, and the Sheets to Sheets Trail people, they partnered up with our local hotels and tried to get them some discounts for the tourists that were coming in here for the run. So that was a great event. We're looking forward to it for next year, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Bender.
Yes, I want to thank everyone who came out and spoke tonight and the letters that Ms. Cupka read. I appreciate every time somebody comes out and tells us how they feel, and every topic is important to the people who speak about it, and I love to listen to what they have to say. And a lot of the people that Mrs. Stonehill talked about, that she interviewed, I've interviewed the athletes before for the King George Sports Hall of Fame, and they do have very interesting stories that they tell, and it's just, it's very inspiring to listen to their stories. So I want to thank you for coming out and speaking, online, written, or right here. One other thing I want to mention, we have, most of my meetings are coming tomorrow and on, so I don't really have any meetings to report, but I do want to make some appeals to the public to contact me for some positions we have to fill. Like Mr. Granger said, the Board of Zoning Appeals, I have had one the whole time I've been on the board, and I ask a lot of people, and then when they find out what it entails, they don't really have interest. So if anybody would like to be on the Board of Zoning Appeals, please call me or email me. As serving as the Chairwoman of GWRC, I want to make it known that we have two vacancies on the Citizen Transportation Advisory Committee. This is a FAMPO board, so if anybody is interested in transportation, please call myself or Ms. Cupka if you're interested, or email us. And last but not least, I want to thank Ms. Jean Frazer for her time on Healthy Generations, which is also known as the Rappahannock Area Agency on Aging. She had to step down from her post, and I would like, if someone's really passionate about seniors and helping seniors in our community, we need a citizen rep for that board. I currently serve on it as a supervisor, but we need a senior, somebody who's interested in senior citizen affairs to please step up and volunteer. And then lastly, I'd like to thank Mr. Cusenberry for coming back and helping us out. I appreciate it. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you for everybody who came out and gave public comment tonight. As Mr. Granger spoke to earlier at a previous meeting, there was a vote, it was 3 to 2, and I initially cast my vote in support of the Ralph Bunch Arts and Humanities Center option, but there was a letter of intent with specific benchmarks. Those benchmarks were put in place because of concerns that I know myself, other board members may have had with previous experiences, and also concerns from the public. That's why those benchmarks were put in there. They were not met, therefore, the letter of intent went the way it did, and it puts us to where we are. And I look forward to future engagements and to see what possibilities lie out there because something does need to be done with this building. It's a county asset. We're responsible for maintaining it, and it does carry a lot of historical influence that that story needs to be put out there. So I look forward to getting something done with that because it seems like we've been talking about this forever, but every time a venture has come up, it always seems to go one way or the other. So I look forward to hearing on that in the future. I also would like to thank Chairwoman Cupka for coordinating the Service Authority Board of Directors and the Board of Supervisors tonight for the joint meeting. Very informative and gave us a lot to think about, and also brought a lot out to the public to see what the real situation is and future impacts and growth. So thank you very much for coordinating that. And with that, I feel like a winner tonight because two people are looking for people, and I got two to appoint. So first off, Madam Chair, I would like to appoint Mr. Walter Moss to the King George County Planning Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Your next appointment, Mr. Bush?
Would be Mr. Taylor Courtney to the Wetlands Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. So let me start by thanking everyone who came out this evening for public comment. Thank you, Mrs. Stonehill, for your comment on behalf of RBH C and for your comment on behalf of King George NAACP. Mr. Michael Hayes, although you are no longer a resident, you certainly seem to remain engaged in our community. I want to thank you for your comment on behalf of RBH C. Ms. Dora Johnson and Mr. Christopher Brown, online, thank you both for your comment regarding RBH C. Brown, online, thank you both for your comment regarding RBAHC. I want to thank Mr. Cusenberry. Thank you very much for rejoining us for an interim period. Thank you, sir. And on to my board report, I'll just provide some highlights. As Mr. Stonehill previously stated, I worked with him for a short period of time at the Route 3 cleanup on Saturday, March 6th, and then I volunteered up in Owens at the Dogren Railroad Heritage Trail to make improvements to the course in anticipation of the Sheets to Sheets Run. Friday, March 12th, I want to thank Rappahannock Area Health District and all the staff and volunteers, as well as our county employees who support our community's weekly vaccination clinic, graciously hosted by King George Family YMCA every Friday. Senator Tim Kane visited the clinic last Friday and saw the operation firsthand. I was able to speak to him as well about our community's infrastructure needs, particularly broadband and water sewer improvements. Saturday, March 13th, also attended the Sheets to Sheets Run Finish Line at the Sheets at Owens Drive. I want to thank Race Director Chris Chalkley and all the volunteers and sponsors for putting on a successful event. And I want to give a plug for our Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Chris Clark. I would remind the community, March 27th, we have a Parks Community Cleanup Day at various county parks from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and there is a sign up genius link available online to sign up. Thank you very much. We will move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Cusenberry, we had a few edits, correct?
Correct. They were just typographical and other cleanup items. They will be corrected.
Very good. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept the consent agenda with the required updates as presented.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. County officials reports, I do not believe we have any constitutional officers in the audience here tonight. Mr. Britton, are you still online, sir? Mr. Britton did inform me that he would not have, yes, go ahead, Mr. Britton.
I am online. Sorry, I had muted myself. I apologize. I don't have a report, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank Travis for stepping into the breach during the county administrator search, and I wanted to thank Chris Dines for, I had to call in tonight, and so, for providing all the IT that allows everybody to call in during these virtual meeting times as necessary. But I didn't have a report. Thanks for pushing the closed session until the next meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Britton. All right, then, we will move on to action items. Department of Parks and Recreation, Trailways Feasibility Study. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. On April 3, 2018, Mr. Drew Williams and Ms. Denise Nelson of the Berkeley Group presented the Trailways Feasibility Study to the King George County Board of Supervisors. That evening, concerns were raised about the term's hard surface in regards to the Dogren Railroad Heritage Trail, and the board asked that edits be made to reflect that asphalt was not desired. So, the report was remanded back to the Berkeley Group. That report has never come back to the Board of Supervisors through approval, but the Rails to Trails Concernancy and the National Parks Service define a hard surface trail as one that includes asphalt, concrete, boardwalk, or crushed stone. A soft surface trail is wood chips, natural earth, grass, sand, or dirt. It is the staff's opinion that the wording of hard surface is sufficient in the study that was presented on April 3, 2018. The owner of the trail would be the one to determine the actual surfacing. Conversations with Mr. Brickley and the Friends of the Dogren Railroad Heritage Trail, both, they all say that they would like it to be a gravel or crushed stone surface, which by definition is hard surface. We have used this study already in 2019 as part of our capital improvement plan, where we looked at the sidewalk improvements near Owens Drive, and I will be working with the Fredericksburg Area Metropolitan Planning Organization and the George Washington Regional Commission on a regional greenway study. So, this Trailways Plan is very important to those things. I asked tonight that the Board of Supervisors approve the plan as presented originally on April 3, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Questions, discussion from members? All right, then, we have a motion properly seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Department of Economic Development and Tourism, Tourism Advisory Committee application, King George Trail Series. Mr. Minor?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I think the first step is to sort of go over the tourism fund with you all this evening. Currently, well, if you go to page 5 of the handout I provided you, I've highlighted what we have currently in the tourism fund balance, $12,895 for this fiscal year, 2021. The current balance fund is $626,932.94 as of today. The three applications I'm going to go over with you, if we approved all of them tonight, we wouldn't have enough money this fiscal year to cover them in the current budget. So, I just wanted to note that before we get started. Good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. That's why I asked that you bring this, for all of us to see what the fund balance is the fiscal year versus the entire fund.
So, the first application is going to be Arsenal Events, the King George County Trail Series. We are requesting money from the Tourism Fund for the following project. Arsenal Events will be promoting a total of four races over the course of 2021 using the Dogren Heritage Trail. The race includes the Dogren Half Marathon, the 3H Half Marathon, the Howling Coyote, and the Sheets to Sheets, the Sheets to Sheets Race 2022 Run. They are requesting assistance with custom banners, mile markers, A-frame sign holders, custom barriers, all items that can be reused. Banners will display with King George County Trail Series logo, which highlights what the county has to offer. Historically, we know that Sheets to Sheets Race has grown every year. This request will fund the remaining three races of the year in 2020, and then the Sheets to Sheets of 2022. This series allows runners to experience the rural portions of the county during three seasons, and to the Dogren Heritage Trail and Calhoun State Park, and thus encouraging them to return to the county. They will be partnering with local hotels and restaurants. The TAC has approved the application with the exception of item number eight, which requires $6,000 for medals. TAC recommendation is to approve, the BOS approved, $10,025 funding for Arsenal Events, King George Trail Series. Staff agrees with this recommendation. Just one thing to note with this application, the TAC did approve $1,600 for one race to fund the medals that they requested. The idea of the medals is to essentially pay for, so the Arsenal Events is going to cover the medals regardless of our funding, is what they essentially said when they were front of the TAC application. So, the TAC graciously approved at least one of them to get it started, because it's supposed to be a four-race series set, sort of magnetic, they combine, sort of like collector's items for each one of the top finishers. So, that's how the application is sort of designed, to cover at least one of those races.
Do I have questions from members of the board? Mr. Granger?
I'm sorry, you said for the medals, one set of medals. What was the cost of that one? $1,600, was it?
Yeah, $1,600. In the total application, they approximated about $1,500 for each event. So, each event, the medals would cost $1,500, so multiplied by four, it'd be $1,600.
Okay. What was, so, the TAC didn't feel that all the medals bubbled up to, what's the word I'm looking for, legitimate requests? How does one set really appear legitimate if they're not all legitimate?
That's a difficult question to answer, sir.
To me, it's neither, if they said, we have a problem with this, then it should be, it doesn't, it doesn't make the cut.
Absolutely.
My personal opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill?
I really think I have a question. I was just saying that the runs always seem to be very, very popular, so, and getting more so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Bender?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm looking at the summary of information, and it said a request of $6,000 for medals, and then it says TAC recommends $10,000, so, and then you mentioned $1,600. So, what is the actual request, unless I missed it? Is it $10,000? And what is the $10,000? Because those are some pretty nice medals if it's $10,000 in medals.
Yes, ma'am. And she didn't provide a hard example to bring before the board, but that $1,600 would just cover that one event. So, just tacking that on to the, so, if you take the $1,600 out, the total application without the medals would be $8,425.
The rest of the $8,000 is for what? Is for signage, advertising?
Reusable signage, the current reoccurring cost, so let's say they wanted to continue this in 2022 and 2023 beyond, assuming that they use the same items, it would be $2,350 annually if we wanted to continue. That's the reoccurring cost, advertising, promotional materials, and so on.
Now, one thing I'm asking about these medals, and you probably don't know, because as a coach who hosted many invitationals and got many medals, one of the things I found was cost effective is not putting the date on it so that you could actually reuse it. Are these dated? Because I know in the running community, these medals, they love to hang them on their wall, and it's very special, and if it has, if you really love the event, you come back every year and you hang those medals up, but it just seems this amount is very expensive, even for medals. I'm just saying from somebody who used to buy medals all the time. That's all the comment I had.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nick, thank you for coming out tonight. So, I agree with Mr. Granger's line of thinking on this. So, bottom line, it was $10,000 approval, subtract the $1,600 that was allocated for the medals. We're looking at, the board would be making a motion if we were to adopt this. Without the medals expenditure, we'd be looking at approving $8,425.0. Is that correct, Nick?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. So, I apologize, my computer is dead here. It's not charging. So, I can't look at the packet, the application. So, that $1,600 that they state is for the first set of medals for the first event, and does that include the setup charge, I'm guessing?
So, in our application, it says, on average, the custom medals for 225 to 250-person race cost around $1,500 at a minimum. It says, we are requesting $6,000 to aid in promoting these four races in 2021. And she just basically explains the value of creating these medals and handing them out after each race. The reason why they do cost so much is essentially that they are a diecast finisher medal with a custom ribbon or another finisher item for each race. So, that's the reason why they're so expensive. And apparently, this is supposed to be a magnetic, so you can combine all four of them if you're a top finisher. Again, 15, around $1,500, which is, I think, the reason why the TAC approved $1,600 for them, at least to offset the cost for one race.
Okay.
They did see value in it. They did see value in having the medals. I think it's also something that Stafford County had supported with Arsenal Events, ma'am. So, I think that they wanted to at least show some sort of goodwill in saying, we'll offset the cost for one event.
So, with my calculator here, that comes out to $6.67 per medal is where we're at for the per-person cost. All right, so you answered that question. I would, I would just reiterate Mr. Stonehill's comments. That race was very well attended, the Sheets to Sheets Run last weekend. It was very well-run by the race director, and that's one in the series for next year. And I just want to give a little plug here for my little sticker, the decals that you handed out from Economic Development and Tourism, and the T-shirts that match. So, great job working on promoting return visits to King George County. I really appreciate that. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the tax application for the Trail Series in the amount of $8,425.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Minor.
Yes, ma'am.
Move on to your next item, sir?
So, the next tourism funding application, ma'am, is the King George County Economic Development, King George County, King George Parks and Recreation Supplemental Guide Signs. King George Parks and Recreation is requesting $40,000 for guide signs and requests money from the TAC funding to cover the initial cost of installation. Seals and Sports Complex, Sedell Brooks Junior Park and Barnesfield Park are the county's three major parks. They can be difficult for residents to locate, and even harder for out-of-towners to find. King George Parks and Recreation, through a program with Virginia Integrated Directional Signing, will install signs on Route 3 and 301 to point visitors to the appropriate parks. For Sedell Brooks Junior Park, two signs on the US 301, one northbound and one southbound, two on Route 3, and one eastbound and one westbound, and two on Route 205, one northbound and one southbound. For Seals and Sports Complex, two signs on Route 3, one eastbound, one westbound, and one sign on Fletcher's Chapel, northbound. For Barnesfield Park, two signs, two signs on US 301, one northbound, one southbound. Directional finding, direction finding will be enhanced to each park as signs are consistent with VDOT signage. After review, TAC recommends that the BOS approve $40,000 for the funding for the King George County Parks and Recreation application. Staff agrees with TAC's recommendations.
Questions from members? None. Mr. Granger? Mr. Stonehill? Ms. Bender?
I just want to make a comment special about Barnesfield and Sedell Brooks Junior Park. I've had numerous constituents complain about the signage at Sedell Brooks Junior Park, and so it would be nice to have some nice signage that was consistent. And with Barnesfield Park, the soccer team I'm coaching is practicing there for Parks and Rec, and I actually had several residents go, I'm not sure exactly where there is, because when I drove there on Monday, I saw what they were talking about. The only sign that you really can see is the one that's in front of the park. So, if you don't know it's there and you miss it, you might be going over the bridge and paying a toll. So, I think it would be really important to have more signage there so people know what our assets are. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Bush?
No questions at this time, ma'am.
All right. I will entertain a motion in order to facilitate any further discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the TAC recommended $40,000 funding for the King George County Parks and Recreation signage for the parks.
Ms. Bender, friendly amendment, can you please specify in your motion that the source of the funds is the TAC fund balance?
And the funds will-
Not the fiscal year.
Yeah. TAC funds will come from the TAC fund balance.
Second.
Any further discussion? So, I would like to add, because this wasn't a question, so, I try to stay in my lane with maintaining order here. I want to add, and Mr. Clark and Mr. Minor know, that this has been a priority of mine since I was on staff in Economic Development and Tourism. I believe I first brought this in 2018, actually during Mr. Granger's Economic Development Strategic Plan Town Hall. Yes. Yes, sir. So, this is something that I advocated for, but fortunately, unfortunately, due to the tricentennial anniversary planning, it had to take a backseat for a time, because we had to make sure that we did right by that. But I feel like having this signage is a huge step forward- But I feel like having this signage is a huge step forward in promoting sports tourism, both for Mr. Minor's department and for Mr. Clark's department, because this board, when we met, had a joint work session with the Tourism Advisory Committee, we stated publicly that that is one of our priorities. I also would like to add that I called Mr. Sedell Brooks to inform him that this would be up for consideration this evening, and he is very grateful to the board that it is being considered. He's very proud of his park, and I think we need to do everything we can to have more visitors be able to find it, and he made sure to hit me up for a pavilion while we spoke. So with that, we have a motion properly seconded. Anyone else have anything further? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And one last item, Mr. Minor, TAC application, visit King George Marketing.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. My department is requesting funds from the tourism fund for the following project. The Department of Economic Development and Tourism requests $6,000 from the county's tourism fund for Visit King George website search engine optimization. These ads will put our banner messages and result in a site being a top option for tourist prospects in our desired geographic regions who have expressed interest in visiting King George County. I'm sure everyone on the board remembers that I brought this about two weeks ago, or four weeks ago. In the, basically, the request was not targeted towards the tourism fund, it was actually targeted towards the general fund. This is just that correction, same application. Nothing changes. Happy to take any questions.
Questions from members?
I do have a question, Madam Chair. Does this still lock in a contract with this one supplier for how long? Is there a limit?
Yes, ma'am, so it's annually, so it's not in perpetuity, it's just an annual contract, $600, $500 a month, same company.
Because I would like to see more companies bid for it in a different package, but that's always what I've said about this one. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else? Mr. Stonehill, did you have anything? Mr. Bush? So, question with regard to the budget in the TAC fund. So if I'm reading this right, we had $84.25, and for the fiscal year remaining is $12,895.42. So there would not be sufficient funds in the fiscal year to cover this, so this too would need to come from the current fund balance, correct?
Yes, ma'am, well, yes, ma'am, but it is being billed monthly, so this would kick in in April, and again, it'd be a $500 encumbrance to the tourism fund. I think the larger amounts would need to, I'm not, I don't know if they would need to be in the next-
Out of the next. I see what you're saying, yeah. So, so current fiscal year would just be April, May, June?
Yes.
And then the remainder of the funds would be the next fiscal year to cover?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I just, I want to make sure we allocate it from the right funding source, and then also, what does that do to, I believe you have a staff, a part-time staff member who provides administrative services to the Tourism Advisory Committee and works on tourism initiatives for your department? Do you know what that does to your ability to cover that position for the remainder of the fiscal year?
I do not have, like, her monthly encumbrance against the fund off the top of my head, I apologize. But what we could all, what I could, what I could essentially suggest is that, since the Arsenal Events and my funding aren't urgent, we could kick these in at the beginning of July 1, or when the next fiscal year rolls around. We could offer that as an option, but the fund should cover, as of right now, should cover her for the remainder of the fiscal year. She is part-time.
Yeah, so I'm looking at two and three, and I believe you are correct. The year to date is 9,409. So yes, it looks like you should be okay through the end of the fiscal year. If that's not the case, please don't hesitate to work with Mr. Cusenberry to return to the board, and we'll make sure we get you what you need, okay?
Yep, thank you, ma'am.
All right. So we had, did we have a motion yet? I'll entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve the SEO Goals Ad Visit King George Website TAC request in the amount of $6,000 from the tourism fund.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Minor.
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you for keeping me straight, Mr. Granger. All right, let's move on, seeing no discussion items. County administrators report. Mr. Cusenberry?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Give me an update on some projects. The Cedric Crossing project, the work is substantially complete on that project. We are waiting for the weather to get warmer. In order to finish the project, put down the surface on the roads, we need the surface temperature to be 60 degrees and the air temperature to be 70 degrees. So it'll probably be mid to late April before we can finish that project. The next project, the middle school turn lane project is substantially complete. I think that was complete for the runners. So we got a little bit of punchless work to do there, but that project turned out very well. Again, we were delayed on that project because of the weather, and had to wait for dry and warmer conditions. I've contacted VDOT at one of your April meetings, VDOT and the MDTA will come to your board meeting and provide you an update on an ice bridge project. At your April 6 meeting, David Beal will be coming and talking to the board of your six-year road plan. And so after his presentation, there will be a board work session in May, so you can adopt the plan in June. There needs to be a public hearing, obviously, for that. Our next project, I've talked to the chair and Mr. Bush, we're getting ready to start the Ferry Beach Riverbank Stabilization Project, probably in early to mid-April, and we would wonder if the board would like to have a groundbreaking ceremony. We believe that the state agencies and the federal agencies would like to participate in a groundbreaking ceremony, so if the board is interested, we'll be happy to schedule that ceremony and let you know.
I'll start, pleasure of the board, I'll start with Mr. Bush, because it is your district, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, spoke with Travis about it, I support it. I also asked him that if the board does move forward with this, to invite Mr. Bennett and Mr. Jim Howard.
Thank you. Ms. Bender?
I agree.
Great. Mr. Stonehill?
Yes, I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Granger.
Agreed.
Very good, and I do as well. Thank you.
We will schedule it and let the board know. And the last item, if any board member would like to tour the middle school expansion, now that that's substantially complete, just let me know, and if you want to do it as a group or individually, we can accommodate you either way.
All right. Anyone have, members have questions for Mr. Cusenberry with regard to his report?
Yeah, I just have one question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Bender.
Are we going to have a ground, not a groundbreaking, but I guess a reintroduction of the middle school? Because we, with COVID, we never, it was finished in November, wasn't it?
It wasn't quite finished in November. There was a lot of punchless work to have been completed, and that work is, most of that work has been completed. So, yeah, if that's what the board would like, we can do that.
I was just mentioning, I had a couple people ask that we never, we did that, so thank you.
Mr. Bennett, or Mr. Bush, did you want to say something?
Yes, Madam Chair. Specific to the budget work sessions, I know our last meeting, you hadn't been able to take your county administrator cuts on the departments, but whenever you get those done as soonest, preferably before our next budget work session, if you can get those to us, I'd like to take a look at that before we come back to our next meeting.
Yes, it will probably be, it will probably be prior to the March 31 work session.
Okay. And that's with the school board?
That's right. But my reductions or adjustments, I'll call it adjustments, my adjustments won't affect the school budget yet, because you haven't received that.
Right.
That would take-
Yeah, and the reason I wanted to see your cuts is because I want to kind of have a better idea going into that meeting.
Absolutely.
As early as I can get, planning and looking at things, at least just from my one-fifth of a say in it, I'd like to do that. So thank you very much.
Yeah, probably toward the end of, I would say it would be by the end of the week of March 24, I'll have some preliminary adjustments to the board to consider.
Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
Madam Chair, if I could just jump in one second, if you do, I'm sure Travis has this covered, but if you do schedule the groundbreaking or tours with more than two members of the board, we'll have to advertise that.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. All right. There being no further business of the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn to March 17, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. right here in the boardroom.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are adjourned.